So I'll call the meeting of the Planning Board to order. Today is Thursday, June 10th. We are on Zoom. Due to the ongoing, still ongoing, because it has not been lifted yet, COVID-19 state of emergency or crisis, or whatever the state is calling it. And with us, this is Ann Weeks, I'm the chairman of the board. Mrs. Virginia Rogers is in the room virtually with us. She is vice chair, members Peter Clay, David Anderson. I saw Dan Pascarello. And I also see Catherine Tinsley, our recording secretary, and Margaret Hoffman, our planning staff. And then Anthony Tamponi is here with us as well. Is there anyone else from the, I'm sort of scrolling around here, sorry. Is there anyone else from the public who is in the room? But not on video? No. So I guess our first order of business is the reorganization of the board. And then there are a number of things, other administrative matters. Do we want to juggle this? I guess we have to do the reorganization of the board first, and then maybe we can juggle things around so that Mr. Tamponi doesn't have to wait through all of our other conversations. Although you're the second, you're the second item, so never mind. Sorry, I'm a little, it's been a long day. So every year after the election, we vote for chair and vice chair and of the planning board. And I guess it's in order to take nominations.
I move to nominate Ann as chair of the board.
Second.
All right, well, a nomination has been put forward. Is there other nominations? Silence indicating there are no other nominations. I will call for a vote. Entertain motions for vice chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Clay, aye.
Aye. Anderson, aye.
Another year. Thank you, appreciate that. And now I will take nominations for vice chair.
Ann, can I interrupt you one second?
You can.
Please, I'm sorry, do you accept the nomination?
Oh, I do, thank you.
Yeah, it's not actually a vote. It's once you're nominated, if there's no other nominations, you're accepted or not.
Okay, terrific.
Thank you.
Unless we had a, unless there were no other, yeah.
Right.
Okay, I am, I'm looking for nominations for volunteers for vice chair.
I would like to nominate Dan Pascarella.
I second that choice.
Are there other nominations? Virginia, I sense you do not want to continue?
I expect this to be my last year. I think I'm up for election in next May. And I think it's appropriate that someone else become vice chair so they can unseat you next year.
There you go. That sounds terrific. As Ms. Tinsley pointed out, we do not need a vote. So hearing no further nominations, I would say Dan Pascarella, you are now officially the vice chair of the Town of Wyndham Planning Board.
You accept the nomination?
I do, thank you, Virginia.
Oh, good.
Thank you, Virginia.
I wanted to check it out with Dan ahead of time, so might have been.
Do we need to do anything else, like the CPC, or are we all set?
I think we don't, but I would ask Margaret if she feels like there are slots unfilled that need to be filled.
Peter, you're the liaison to the CPC, right? I think Peter is.
Yeah, I am.
The way that goes is that he has a term. Once he is elected, he has a three year term.
Yeah, I think it's a three-year term, so I think he's okay.
I'm fine with it.
All right, that being the case, we can move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Wyndham Pines vote with respect to a flagpole at 56 to 60 Main Street. Margaret, is there a presentation or Mr. Tamponi?
Yes, I have a, a plan that Mr. Tamponi sent us requesting a flagpole at the front of the location. The, the reason that we brought it to the planning board is because this is a special permit. The location of the flagpole, let me just rotate this view, is within the zoning bylaw regulation. So it's, it's no closer than 20 feet. And Tony, I believe this is a 30-foot flagpole, possibly 30 feet?
Yes, it would be 30, probably 35, Margaret.
Okay, 35. Anything 20 feet and under is exempt from the regulation of setbacks, but from the dimension regulations, but this is a higher flagpole. So we thought it should come before the board, even though it's not within, it's not setback, but it's a little bit of a change to the planning board permit. I think what, if the board could determine this is a minor modification to add a flagpole, if it was a special permit, they wouldn't be before the board.
Margaret, can I ask a basic question, which is, I'm, I'm assuming, but I don't know, that this flagpole is intended to fly either a state or federal flag and not an advertisement for the Wyndham Pines, or?
Yes, that's a safe assumption, correct. It will be the American flag.
So it's not a sign, it's truly a flagpole? Okay, great, thank you. I just need to clarify that for myself.
Sure.
So it doesn't need a public hearing if the board can determine it's minor in nature, which I felt it was. It's not a, not a new structure, they're not changing anything about the site itself.
So what is the modification? It's over 30, 20 feet?
No, Virginia, the regulations say that flagpoles 20 feet and lower need to adhere to setback requirements.
Right.
Is a 20-foot front yard setback. This flagpole is over 20 feet.
I see.
It does adhere to the setback requirements.
Right.
What is this red line, if you see it on the plan? 20-foot mark from the street. So the flagpole is outside of that setback.
So why is this modification at all?
You know, it's exactly, it's, it's just something different that wasn't on their original plan. When they were permitted, they showed the location of lights and they showed the location of everything else on the site. This is just one little additional item.
And another dummy question, and that is, does it have to adhere to the setbacks for the new road as well, or just the state road? Would have to be both roads, right?
I think it's both roads. Is it 20 feet from here too? Tony, I didn't, that didn't, I'm sorry.
I don't, you know, to answer your question, I don't know what the regulations are from Pine Hill, which is not a town road. It's a private way.
Yeah, it's still the same, even though it's a private way. I think we still need to have it under our regulations.
We can make it 20 feet.
Certainly looks like it can be made to be 20 feet, just to be safe. And that way, if the town is ever asked to take this road, won't have a non-conforming flagpole.
We can do that on both roads.
So I would like to make a comment, if I might. And that is, first of all, about the affordable housing. They're handsome and really just exceeded expectations in the way they look and present themselves. And I think that Mr. Tamponi has worked long and hard with us to make everything fit into the lot and to fit our, all of our recommendations and requirements. And I just assume that this will enhance the property and is a very good thing that we should approve if it requires any minor modifications. And thank you for that, Mr. Tamponi.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you very much for the compliment. We did our best, and if you get an opportunity, we'd be happy to take any members of the board through the house before we sell them, the two units, which we, we hope to close by the end of June. We have two buyers, they've been approved. Yes.
That's terrific. It is very good.
So.
It's been a long slog, though.
It was a lot of work, but it came out.
Right.
We thank for it now. I'm sorry.
Should we just push that a little bit to the right? So it's, it meets both setbacks?
Yes, I think so.
Are you okay with that, Mr. Tamponi?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Would it be okay to just slide the flagpole a little bit to the right towards the, the house? So that it is, meets both 20-foot setbacks?
Yes, that's not a problem.
So I think we should, so I'd make a motion to approve the inclusion of the flagpole as a minor modification of the plan.
I would second that with the adjustment as noted, so that it meets the setbacks on both streets.
Right.
If there's no further discussion, maybe we should have a vote. Weeks says aye.
I have a question on the motion. I'm sorry, Ms. Weeks, did you want to include that the flagpole was for the American flag only?
No.
Or was that just a question?
I, well. Mr. Pascarella, this is your motion.
Yeah, I would not impose that limitation. You want me to add that the setback is 20 feet from each road?
If you would accept that, that.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Yep, that's fine with me. So do we have to resecond that?
Well, I, yeah, I'll second that modified motion. And take vote, take a vote. Week says aye.
Pascarella, aye.
Rogers, aye.
Clay says aye.
Anderson, aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tamponi, for bringing this to us and for your flexibility. And as Ms. Rogers said, thank you for your work.
Thanks.
I also think it's going to be nice coming around that corner. And as you turn up towards Tendercrop Farms, you see that big flag. It's gonna be great.
I'll draft.
Thank you. We think so also, that's why we're doing it.
Can we get it there by the 4th of July?
I find you as a cemetery, too, which is great.
If the Historic Commission approves it, we'll be happy to.
They, they do need Historic Commission.
We'll do what we're scheduled.
When you take this to the Historic District Commission, can you just make sure that the X meets both the setbacks? If you're doing a scale drawing, thank you.
We actually, we made an application to them, and I'm still waiting to hear back from, from Jackie on if we're going to be in on this month's meeting. So hopefully, we will be approved by them and can try to have it up by the boards.
Well, thanks for bringing it to us. And Margaret, I don't know if you want to throw the agenda back up on the screen?
Yeah.
Move on to the next item.
Okay, thank, thank you very much for your vote. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tony.
Have a good evening.
You too, Margaret, good night.
So this third item is a permit extension request for 2013 to 2015 R Large Row. And I think you're going to need to explain that to us.
Yes, yeah, I can. 213 Rear Large Row was granted a permit in 2017 for the construction of two house lots in the back. There's a house in the front now, and they got a permit to construct two house lots way in the back.
Tom, do you have a drawing for that that you can draw? So we can take a look.
I don't have the plan. Damn, let me see. If you want to give me a minute, I can pull it up, but I can give you a little bit of brief history. 2017, it was permitted for the two lots up in the back. Then Tom Ellis owned it for some time and had been trying to sell it. It was not, it was not selling. The permit was about to expire in 2019. I think he came in and the, we did an extension at that time. Over the past year, I think he has, he has sold the property. The new owners have sent an application asking if permit extended again. And I'm going to find the plan, just so everyone's familiar with it.
Is this at the corner of?
Yeah.
And, yeah, okay.
Yes, it's at the corner. Ian, were you on the board when this was permitted?
I think I was, yes.
Okay, I think you were too. It was a big con con project also. And it's an unusual case because the actual special permit was issued, I think, in 1997. And owners, the Beals owned it, and the planning board gave them this special permit that said, you don't have to do anything until, I think, Mrs. Beal passed away or something. So she lived on, in the property. Let me.
I don't know about any of that history. I think that, I'm not sure that that was explained to us at the time, but I do remember. I know that house, and so I was.
Margaret, didn't, didn't we vote to extend this in 2019?
We did, yes. 2019, it was an extension.
So we're just doing it again, or they're just asking?
Yeah.
Okay.
They've just asked for another extension. So the land's been purchased, and the new owners really don't know what they want to do yet, whether they want to act on this permit or not. I think their first inclination was to not and to just leave the land. But then I think they looked at it and are wondering what, maybe they may want to exercise the special permit. Okay, do you want to see the, the plan? That was approved? Let's see, I've got.
I mean, I remember the plan, but others on the board who were not on at the time might want to see it. Just, in a visual, in their minds of what this was and what we approved.
I'm going to, this is the 1992 plan. So I, I'm sorry, it was 1997. But, and it's, it's rather difficult to look at. But essentially, you know, here's Large Row.
We don't have it on our screens, at least I don't have it on mine.
Really, maybe I should share screen. Wait a minute.
Sorry about that.
No, no, that's, it's my fault. I'm between two screens here, and sometimes I'm just looking at things. Can you see that? Can you see the plan?
Now I can, yes, thank you.
So this, this is a little bit difficult to look at, but this is Large Row. And then here's what essentially was permitted back in 92. But again, it was to create two, two house lots back here. So this gives you some idea, but. I don't.
You don't.
Oh, I have the, the new one. I'm electronically, we were doing more things. No, I think it's coming up, hold on. Okay, this will give you some idea too. All right, let me stop this one. Let me bring up this one. Okay, so can you see this? This, this is the driveway from Large Row, and this is what's gonna, this is what's happening up here. So there were, there were two houses back in this large area. That's what was permitted. Let me see.
But none of that has been built right now, only the White House up by the street, which is existing structure.
Yep, and can you see that? Where, can you see the Large Row? Entrance the street.
Yes.
There, and then it goes on to the next page to here and comes, comes all the way back. So these two house lots are what would be permitted.
Or what are permitted, right? I mean.
That, that are, yes, this is the, the special permit. This is what you would be allowed to do, to create this drive. And then go all the way back and two houses back here. I'm, they got their conservation permit extended too, just recently, so.
So what is the requested extension?
They have requested an extension. They haven't requested a timeframe, I think, let me, Melissa.
So I, my question is, if we extended this two years ago, do we need to extend it again? Well, I see it expires.
It expires in October, I mean, of June 8th, 2021.
So it's yesterday.
Yeah, yeah, and that is okay, because they did get us their request before it expired. So the board can act on it.
So what did Concom grant?
Concom granted them a two-year extension. Let me grab that one, Dan, I didn't. Let me see. Extension. This is in 2020. To, I'm sorry, they're extended until May 8th, 2022.
Okay, and they didn't specify what they're asking us for, so.
No, they didn't.
So I would make a motion that we granted extension until May 8th. What was it, May 8th, 2022, consistently, what Concom granted?
I would second that.
I, I would recommend that you just extend it for a one-year period to June 8th, 2022. That way, it's just a one-year extension instead of 300 and, you know, 55-day extension. Does that make sense?
And the reason that they chose May 8th was that was when they heard it?
That was when their permit expired, right? It was May 8th. So the Concom permit expired in May, but the planning board permit expires in June. So it's granted a, a two-year extension because it expired in 2020. So if the planning board wanted to grant a one-year extension, it would.
All right, so I'll revise my motion that we grant an extension until June 8th of 2022.
Before we vote, I have a question. What, what happens if we don't extend it?
It expires, and the permit is no longer valid.
So they would have to apply again for a new special permit?
They were.
Correct.
Meaning that the parcel's not currently develop, developable?
Right.
So it has not been subdivided? I'm sorry, Virginia.
That's all right. Go ahead and ask your question.
It has not been subdivided, is that correct? It's only got the special permit on it? Let's try to understand. Yeah, okay. Not only, but there's not a separate subdivision?
It seems to me that if we, if we are asked to act upon it, that we will need something from the Concom. So could we make it on the, the day that we would be meeting in June after the Concom time limit expires? Instead of making it, say, on a random June 8th?
June 8th is not really random, Virginia. It's date that it would have expired before.
So that's, okay.
Just go, you go year to year.
Okay, all right.
22, 21, yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's why we use those dates.
Right, okay.
And are you, Margaret, showing us the property, seeing in on it?
Do you see the map?
I do.
Oh, good, yeah, I was just going to zoom in on it over here.
It's, I think it's. 22, I think.
Yep, it's lot 22. This is the property now, so it's, there's a conservation restriction on a good portion of it. But this, this is, this is where the houses would be going back here. So not, nothing's been done. They've not acted on the permit in any way yet. Giving them this one-year extension, I guess, would give these new owners an opportunity to make that decision, whether they want to move forward with it or not.
So the new owners bought the whole, the whole thing, the 26 acres or whatever?
Yes.
But, and I'm also curious, because the application for the extension seems to have come from the prior owner.
No, the, the application that you were looking at tonight is from the new owner's representative. I'm sorry, I should make that a little bigger.
Looked like the application from the Concom, for the Concom came from Tom, but.
Yeah, yeah, Tom still owned it when he applied for the Conservation Commission extension. And now he has sold it, and the new owner, owner is asking for an extension. This Adam Rutledge is the, the owner's representative.
Do we know anything about what they, I mean, obviously, they don't know what they intend for the property, it sounds like, but it looks like it's some type of farm trust? I mean, do we know anything about what's going to happen here?
We don't, no, we don't know. They haven't told.
Well, I'm there, it appears, if you can scroll down, that the farm trust, and maybe others can see it, is a collection of properties other than this one. Well, I think there's a motion on the table, is there not?
There is.
Did I have a second?
Second.
Is there more discussion?
Ms. Weeks, does it matter who's being granted the permit extension? Do we need to put the trust in here? Is it just the simple statement to grant the permit extension? Should we include Large Row or the Four Corners Trust?
Well, the permit, I believe, runs with the land and not the particular owner, if I understand that correctly.
Yeah, this one does, Ian, because the special permit specified that.
So in that event, you don't need to put anything further on it, except that it's, you know, we've extended it.
Yeah, and Catherine, I can give you the actual special permit, so you know which special permit it is being extended.
Okay.
Further discussion? Hearing none, I would take a vote. Week says aye.
Oscarello, aye.
Rogers, aye.
Place says aye.
Anderson, aye.
Thank you very much. Obviously, we'd be interested to learn what the owner intends for this property. Intend to develop it or not, but.
Sure, and I, I'll send them a letter, you know, indicating that you've extended the permit until June 8th, just for one year. And I think within the year, perhaps they'll come back to you and let you know what, what they plan to do there. Um, all right, so let me grab agenda. Okay. The next one is the.
Spring Hill.
Yes, Spring Hill update. A lot. Well, there is a bit to discuss. I just wanted to give you a bit of an update on Spring Hill. They were on their last building permit, I think. They've, they've come in, well, no, there's, I think the last, the last lot, they've applied to the Conservation Commission for a notice of intent to start a single-family home on, it's number 11, Spring Hill. So all of the lots have been developed, except this one last one. And we anticipate that'll be going this summer. They, they should be building on that this summer, once everything works out. We've been working with them on the erosion control issues and we haven't had really any, any major problems. They're keeping up with the sweeping. Uh, you know, we've been fortunate for, for that project, that there hasn't been a lot of rain. But they do have a lot of erosion control in place and, and we've been keeping an eye on that. They when Mulry, the tree warden, has given us a plan for the street trees. The planning board decision requires two trees, two street trees per lot. When, when has done a big plan, I don't have it electronically, and it's really big and he drew it by hand. I've given that to the developers, Dan Woollett, he's their general contractor on the project, he's the guy that we deal with mostly. So he's looked at it, uh, and he, he and Win and myself will sit down and make sure they understand where all these trees need to go and what the, the species are. Because Win's been pretty specific about what species he wants to see in what locations. Um, all of the trees will be off the sidewalk, they won't be between the, the sidewalk and the grassy strip, they'll be on people's properties. So, um, to, so that DPW can plow sidewalks and stuff and there won't be a problem with the trees breaking up the sidewalks later in time. Um, the other item on this is the affordable unit. So 83 Dodgers Row has sold, the owner is, has moved in and he's living there. I've talked to him a couple of times, he seems very happy that he's in the, the house. Um, he has some, anything he'd like to do there has to go through Conservation because he is right on, um, a wetland, so. But he seems very happy, so we're pleased with that. I've spoken with Habitat for Humanity and I think by the end of this month, if not by the end of next week, they should be getting the, their lot from the developer. The developer is donating lot 17 to Habitat for Humanity with $40,000. They're giving them $40,000 toward the construction of the, the house. Habitat is planning to come to the ZBA with a 40B, similar to what they did on Hull Street. I don't know if this board, probably most of you know, the house on Hull Street, uh, at 40 Hull Street is a Habitat house and it's got two units. And it looks like a single-family home, so their goal here on this property is to create a bill, a structure that looks similar to the other larger homes that are up there. I mean, they're all beautiful, big homes. So this won't be too out of place and, but it will have two units. So I don't know if anyone's familiar with Parsons Hill, similar to what they did up there. They created some nice, um, nice units that fit in, well. So we're, we're just waiting for that to happen. And again, Habitat is, keeps in touch with us and lets us know. We just recently signed off on their regulatory agreement to make sure that the property stays in, with Habitat and that the property has to be developed for affordable housing. Because we, not, not that we thought it would happen, but, you know, if Habitat got it and then something happened and Habitat said, well, I can't, we can't build on it, so we're just gonna sell it as a, you know, market rate lot, that won't happen, so. There's, um, there's.
Thank you.
Place, yeah. So that, that's about it. I don't know if anyone had any questions about Spring Hill? Or is there any concerns, anything you've seen going on, if anyone's been up there?
I have one tree question.
I do too.
If, if these trees go in people's front yards, what is there to prevent someone from taking the tree down in the future?
Well, I don't know that answer, Dan.
I, I don't think anything.
Right.
Can prevent that.
Okay.
My, my tree-related question is, I presume they are not planning on planting these trees in July? Is that correct?
Plant them as soon as it's possible for them.
To allow the trees to survive, right?
Yep.
Because with the watering ban and we've had, you know, you would hate to acquire two street trees and then have them all die.
Right.
So I guess I have a follow-up question, Margaret. Have we done this elsewhere in town?
I have not, I have not done this here, no.
Settlers Lane.
Um, Virginia, I don't know, Settlers Lane was done when I got here, so.
Yeah, Settlers Lane.
Did they? There were three trees required?
Yes.
Let me check Settlers Lane. You know, I'm going.
I'm just, I, I'm also curious about maintenance, because if they're street trees don't, I mean, wouldn't the town have some sort of obligation to maintain them?
I think if they're within a certain distance from the street line, the town can, is gonna be responsible for them. Or not responsible for them, but the town can maintain them.
Required. And, and the warden, the tree warden's plan shows them, while not on the strip between the sidewalk, it would so, so help to have a visual, not on the street, strip between the sidewalk and the street, close enough to the street that it's within the town's jurisdiction.
I think so. Honestly, I'm not sure. It, it didn't.
I, I think it has to be with, I think it has to be within the right of way, Margaret.
Right, that's, that's where I'm wondering, you know.
Planning board decision gave that option to the warden. Grab, I, I have the decision, let me just pull that up. Um, I'm gonna, let me, let me stop share this for a second and grab one other thing. Okay, so the language in the decision surrounding trees was that was that was the conservation one. Okay, the owner shall the owner shall replace a minimum of two street trees in the front of each lot to be located on the lot or in the street layout consistently throughout the development. Such trees shall be maintained by the homeowner. So that, that was the language that we're going by. And Win, I think, prefers them to be on the lots rather than in the street layout, because that, I think, would mean they were in the, the strip.
I'm sure it's better for the trees to have more open land around them and less concrete, so makes sense from a street tree preservation sense.
Yeah.
At least, you know, presuming that the homeowner keeps the tree maintained.
You know, I, I took a picture of the, I don't know if this will work, but I took a picture of the plan. No, that's not gonna, you're not gonna be able to see that on my phone. I don't know. Probably too small to, to really see. But, so Win's gone ahead and, you know, labeled each of the, each of the trees and stuff. So as far as, you know, the maintenance, our thought is that it's so barren up there right now, you know, because they took down everything to, to put in the houses that people are gonna appreciate those trees as they grow. You know, they'll be reasonable trees, as far as I know, that they're gonna offer shade, which is gonna be much needed up there as time goes on.
I think that's an assumption.
Yeah, I just, I just don't know if you can require people to keep, well, once they've bought the lots. I mean, this, this permit applied to the developer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would you prove that we try to do them in this town right of way? Let me, let me check with Win and find out what his idea is for the right of way and where that begins um, on these lots, to make that determination.
I, I also think it would be great to ask him whether he's gonna require these trees to go in over the summer or whether they're gonna wait till the fall just to promote the survivability. I mean, I don't know how big these tree, is he talking about mature trees or little trees?
Four-inch, for some reason, I, I think they were four-inch caliper.
Four-inch caliper. So that's a reasonably sized tree, but if you put a tree in in July and it, it may not survive unless it's really carefully taken care of, and if the town's not gonna be doing that, then. Okay.
Um, so.
I mean, I, I do think that in the past one, and I'm trying to remember whether it was here in my planning job that I had, what, that we held off on the planning requirement so that we were sure the trees would survive. The planting requirement.
The plant, okay. Let me, um, I just wanna check.
Margaret, you would ask Win that.
You, you may wanna ask Town Council for her opinion on the placement and maintenance issue.
Okay, all right. Yeah, let me ask whether and whether the planning board should modify something to address this tree, the trees, or should we?
Looks like it's up to Win.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, I mean.
The planning board had said at the time.
Right, so it's up to, to Win to do this. Just clarifying questions I think we have.
Okay.
I, I, yeah, I, I mean, I think Win should have the benefit of knowing, you know, what the consequence is if he places it on the lot versus the right of way.
Okay. All right. Okay. Yeah, I get what you're saying. I mean, you don't want people to just cut them down if they just don't like them, I mean. Okay.
Yeah, so that's, that's one side, and also, also that the planting should occur in.
And when they trigger.
Yep. Sure that the tree survives.
Okay.
They will take down a dead tree.
Yeah, absolutely, we don't wanna have them die, okay. Yeah, all right, let me do a little more work on that and I'll, um, I'll let you know. And I'll, I'll have the conversation. I mean, they haven't done it yet. We haven't told them specifically what they, what they are and are not doing, because Win and I haven't, um, gone over this ourselves yet, so. But they're aware it's coming.
Well, thank you for letting us know.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
And I have, I have a question about the affordable housing. I'm, I'm a little concerned about the, the, the plan, well, the execution of this plan to donate just the property when I think the intent of the agreement was for them to provide houses, do houses in the lot. So now they've given $40,000 to Habitat for Housing to build the housing. And in past experience, and Habitat turns right around and asks the town for the money to build the houses.
And I, I mentioned that to Dawn Preston. I said, this, this developer is responsible for creating this housing. And Dawn understood that and I said, you know, to create two, two units, which, you know, they've given us one. So it's a decision, they have. More. So. Honestly, Virginia, I don't know, and I, I anticipate that Habitat will come to the town. They'll go to the Affordable Housing Trust.
So what we, what, what, what it, we end up paying per affordable unit through Habitat is ridiculous compared to what we get if it's included in, you know, in the developer's plan. And I think we should just try really hard not to do this again. We can't pay a quarter of a million dollars for every affordable unit that we sell for 130 or 50 or something of that sort.
I understand. Okay, if, if it does come to that point, I'll let you know, um, if Habitat has applied to the town for any funding.
So then I can jump up and down someplace, right?
Yes, we'll have a venue. Okay. All right.
There's some noise coming from someone's background.
Yeah, if you're not muted and you're not speaking, please mute yourself. Um, the next agenda item is SHI.
Catherine, are you, I'm sorry, Anne, Catherine, are you muted? Let, you don't.
I am, I am fully muted.
Here we go, okay.
Um, I'm, I have to confess, SHI doesn't mean anything to me.
I'm sorry.
Perhaps it's good update.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have spelled that out. It's the subsidized housing inventory date.
Oh, thank you.
Sent this out, yeah, I'm sorry. I wanted to just let the board know that we've reached 12.3% of our 10% requirement for affordable housing. And here it is, just so you can see, the Maple Woods project has been counted. Um, which is a good thing, so, you know, we're past the 10%, we're at 12.3. It was one of those.
Maple Woods has not been built yet, though, is that correct?
No, no, no. It hasn't been built nor has it been permitted. Uh, it's been, it has its comprehensive permit, but it does not have building permits yet.
Right, so, okay.
Yeah, so whenever.
But the numbers are right, but the units are not yet.
Yeah, and this will stay on here until February of 2022 unless they pull their building permits. Once they pull their building permits, then it's, it's on until, you know, in perpetuity. So they may, you know, we're, we're hopeful that they're going in, um, for another round of funding. They're applying for another round of funding. State has a mini, mini round, they're calling it. Um, so they're gonna be able to apply in the fall for funding. They didn't get it in December of this past year, but. Um, so Maple Woods is hoping to get the funding to start the project. But in the meantime, it's, it is counting on our SHI. And I'm gonna try to keep it there. I don't know if anyone has questions on that. Oh, Anne, I'm sorry, you muted.
The two units we were just discussing, that Habitat will put in are not the hulls, well, that's Hull Street that's already built, right?
Yes.
The ones are not on this list.
No, and they don't get on here until they pull building permits unless they're a comprehensive permit, uh, like Maple, Maple Woods. So the units that, um, up here, once, if, if they go for a comprehensive permit, a 40B permit, even though it's a friendly 40B, once they get that, we can get those two units on to our, if they come in for two, we can get those counted.
Right.
Good.
The one that's already built in that you were. The one that's already built and that you were just describing has been purchased and someone is living in it is also not on this list, is that correct?
It's not, no, only because I have, um, I have to contact, um, D H C D. And have them get that on there. I. We sent the paperwork, but I don't know why it didn't get counted yet. So I do have an email into them to try to get that one on there.
What about Wenham Pines?
Thank you. That was my next question.
Not yet either. We're sent, we're sending paperwork into D H C D. It takes them a little while to get the, get things.
But so, so really, we're way over twelve percent.
Yeah, we, well, wait, no, yeah, somewhat over. We'll have three, three more units on there. Hopefully within a couple of weeks.
Five, right?
Uh, no.
Two Wenham Pines.
Two Wenham Pines.
Two at.
No, one on Spring Hill.
Well, one that exists, but two more from Habitat, right?
Yeah, and we can't get those counted until Habitat applies for comprehensive permit and gets their comprehensive permit. And they haven't done that yet.
Right, okay.
So, yeah, so should we, should be able to get three more on.
So it might be helpful, Margaret, if, you know, you got this list here, and then if there was also a list of pending.
Uh, okay, this list is, is put together by D H C D, so.
But maybe you could supplement it with a, a pending list.
Okay.
Stuff, stuff that's in the pipeline.
Yeah.
Right, and now we, but I think it's clear that there are five more units in the pipeline, so.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, do you have any information about Maple Woods and what, when they're gonna start their process?
No, again, the only thing I've heard is that they did not get their funding in this last round. But they were told that they could apply during this mini grant, mini round, they're calling it. So the state usually, once a year, uh, considers projects to fund. And, but this year they're having a separate one for small projects that are ready to go, which this one is ready to go. So Andrew DeFranza was, feels pretty positive, I think, about, about getting funding, maybe in the fall. So if that happens, they'll be able to apply for their building permits.
Margaret, oh, go ahead.
I just, I just had a quick question, sorry, Dave. On Wenham Pines, did you say that they had twelve units sold or under agreement?
Yes, let me.
I, I.
Yep.
You don't have to dig up the details, I was.
Okay.
That, that number fourteen oh four is, that's, that's the number of units back in twenty-ten? Or is that, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just curious.
Yeah, they haven't, they haven't released the twenty-twenty census numbers yet.
Do you have a sense? Does anybody, do any of us have a sense? I mean, I'm sure it's higher, I wanna say.
I don't, I don't know if it's a lot higher. I think it's.
Well, it's higher by Spring Hill, certainly.
Yeah, so.
And.
And.
So Wenham Pines.
Twenty-ten, went, yeah, Spring Hill, Wenham Pines, only those that are built.
And I don't know when Settlers.
Settlers, I think Settlers Lane might be too, but I'm not, I wouldn't be surprised if the Boulders was on there, and I'm sorry, I, I can get those numbers for you.
Yeah, but in, I doubt that there's three hundred and seventy new units. So we're still gonna be in the safe harbor, right?
Yeah, yeah. I'm saying, there's gonna be less than a hundred, if that. Yeah, we'll still be in safe harbor. We'd be pretty hard pressed to get out of that, but, um, so, but I'll get those numbers for you.
Thank you.
Great.
Okay, next item on the agenda is. I think it was the master plan.
Uh, it's the regulation update. I don't have a lot of information to give you right now. Caroline Wells and myself are working on the regulations by reviewing them. So Caroline's doing a lot of review. She's got an intern who's helping. So we're, we're getting all of our notes together right now. And I expect us to have a draft within maybe three weeks or so. Some kind of a draft, at least a, a first draft with red lines and, you know, saying, here's where we're seeing some of the issues that we wanna give to the, um, to the board. So, um, but it's in their hands right now. The consultant's hands right now, so. So nothing major.
Okay, and then the master plan, I, I think we're all interested in getting going.
We'll work, well, the master plan is, you know, we, we wanna start moving forward on it. It's a little bit hard because we don't have a town administrator who's gonna be here, you know, for very long. And Tom is great, and he's, he's doing, you know, keeping the boat afloat pretty much, but. Until we can get a town administrator, I think, who can help with this, you know, facilitate this a little bit. One, one of the, the, you know, getting a steering committee together, um. I just feel like to have more support from that office would be helpful for me. To, um, start to move forward more aggressively.
Do we have a timeline for that? I think in another meeting, you mentioned that they had had a session with a candidate, but.
Yeah, and they've offered the position to somebody, Brian Ferrara, I think his name is, is not, not Brian, Ryan, Ryan Ferrara. And, um, apparently they're still in negotiations with him. They were in, they were in executive session on Tuesday night this week. Um, we still haven't heard when, or, you know, when he's starting. So, and you know, you know, we're with several people here, um, Nikki left, um. You know, I'm down, I have just one person here.
Right, and a new town clerk.
Yes, we have a new clerk, um, yeah, so an interim building inspector. So Town Hall is a little, we're just, we're trying to just keep the balls in the air right now.
Skeleton, skeleton crew.
Yeah, we kinda feel that way, so we feel like it's.
So, so it's not something that you need help from us with. Uh, I mean, we obviously can't do anything about the fact that there's no town manager.
Sure.
Right, there are things perhaps we could do, I think. An R F P, should we start thinking about drawing something up?
Yeah, 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 we can, um. Right now, I'm working on a, a couple of other, um. Couple of things, but, yeah, we, we do need to start that, the R F P process, so. I have, I have some templates that I, you know, was, can start from. And I, I wanna do this as soon as I can, um, but I'm not able to commit to it. Like this, over the next week or so. But if I, I could get some templates for the R F P and maybe send them to someone on this board, I don't know if anyone on the board is interested in kinda being a helper for me. Anybody wanna be a helper?
I'll be a helper.
Me be my.
I'm happy to be a helper to, to move it forward.
I know, but I know you're also busy too with your own work and, and everything, um.
Uh, I got time.
Yeah, okay.
I do have time.
Peter, you're on.
Okay, all right, well, that'd be great. No, I'd appreciate that, um. So Peter, maybe you and I could schedule a time to get together and. I can, you know, I can show you what, what I've got and what, what I'm working on to, to start to move things forward.
So just fire some times at me on your days when you're working.
Okay.
I'm sure I got the time.
Okay.
This going.
Okay, great, um, I would say next week I'll get in touch with you on that, um.
Thank you, Peter.
Um, Ian, as far as the steering committee. I don't know, I haven't heard from the selectmen or because, you know, the, the town administrator. I did mention it to him as to who should be responsible for appointing the steering committee. And his thought was the planning board really should do that, because the planning board is the, um, you know, you have to approve those master plans, it's, it goes through the planning board. Are you comfortable with that? Is the board comfortable doing that?
I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with that concept, having heard from the selects that they. Would want us to do it. I'm, I'm wondering about process and whether we need to have the assistance of the consultant we hire. Um, in doing that, I mean, I, I don't wanna recruit people for a process that hasn't started yet, so. Um, I'd be interested in talking about the timing of that.
Okay. Um, because typically a master plan, um, steering committee has. I wanna say typical players on it, you know, will, um, I have my list of, of people that, um. You usually see on them. So, we would wanna have two planning board members, a select board representative. Members from boards and committees that, uh, you know, I think one member of each of the, the big, the bigger committees, like, um. The conservation, um. I would say affordable housing, open space. I, we don't have an economic development committee any longer, but, um, you know.
Historic district?
Yep, an historic person. I'd like to see the, um, town administrator on it. Just, at least on the committee, so that when there are committee meetings, he, he would attend. But again, I don't know that that's gonna be a thing, so Council on Aging is another one. Um, Board of Health.
About an ad hoc member from the community.
Yeah, yeah, and I have, I have three.
Someone from schools.
Yep, someone from the schools. Um, yeah.
I think we just have to be careful that this doesn't end up with twenty people on it.
No, no, and that's the thing that you, I think you wanna keep it to ten to fifteen people usually is what, what's recommended. So do you want me to get a list? Ian, what if I get a list of people that I would recommend for the, for the committee? And then you can kinda look at that, maybe. We can.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if we wanna just put it on as an agenda item for the next meeting, let's just discuss the costs, you know, who's, who. Get the numbers and who the attendee, who the membership should be and.
That'd be great.
Margaret, this is probably one of the first things we should talk about when we get together.
That'd be great.
And I'm sure you have to be best practices out there.
They run, yeah, yep. That'd be great, Peter, thank you. All right, so Peter and I will get together before the next meeting and then we'll present something to the board. Whether it's our list of recommendations for the steering committee and a possible R F P, um, to, to start to look at. That make sense, Ian?
Yes, sounds great.
Okay, great, thank you. Thanks, Peter. All right. Um, meeting minutes, and Dan, Catherine, did you get those ones from Dan?
I, I did.
All right, I mean, I can pull those up.
I think the only substantive edit I had was to the paragraph or the couple of lines about my disclosure. Everything else was just nits.
Need to find it, here it is. Can you see those?
Yep.
Do you want me to resize them or what do you think?
You can just scroll through, I think there are.
You can scroll, yeah.
So you can see these are the red lines.
I don't see anything moving on that screen.
We can only see the top half of the first page.
Oh, really? Okay, all right, let me, let me do something, hold on. Okay, I'm gonna make that a little smaller, wait a minute, I'm gonna zoom it. To a hundred. Tell me what you can see.
Same thing we saw before, nothing's changed.
Is it moving?
Nope.
Nope.
All right, no, stop sharing, hold on. And I'm gonna start sharing again. And. Okay, tell me, is it moving?
Yeah, we can see that, yes.
Okay.
Just, can you make it a little bigger?
Yes. Any better?
Yep.
I don't have any further changes to others on the board. Almost Boulder Lane is misspelled, I think it's B O U L D E R.
Did you see that here?
Third line underneath that bullet. Where the green.
Oh, yeah, right there. Do you see that, Catherine?
There's another one above it.
Yeah, but it's.
No, right.
Same thing on the first line.
Above your cursor.
First line of that paragraph, yep.
But that's spelled right.
B O U.
There you go.
Oh, there, okay.
And same thing down, wow, yeah.
I've done a, I've done a find and search, I'll correct them all.
Okay.
Very good, yeah, cuz there's a number of places for that. Okay, so. Reminds me, I drove by there today, um. I would take a motion to accept the minutes as. As edited. With these red and blue lines.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, weak says aye.
Aye.
Anderson, aye.
Roger's aye.
Play aye.
So you approved other items not anticipated by the chair, the only thing I would say is I drove by. On the interstate and Boulder Lane, stuff's happening.
There is, I actually have a quick update. I know it's, uh, it's something that was not anticipated. Um, Beverly Planner called me or sent me an email and said that they've applied for a marijuana cultivator's license. And they have an application and plans that I can look at, they're not online. So on Monday, I'm gonna go to Beverly Town Hall and City Hall and, and look those over. So she said I could take pictures of them and, you know, but it's a lot of information's redacted because of the safety. I, I guess when an application is filed, they have to, um, submit a safety protocol and things, and those things, um. Have been redacted, but, so I'll get some more information on Monday. On Boulder Lane.
All right, thank you.
If anybody is around and wanted to see those, you can go to the Beverly Town Hall, um, to the, go to the planning department, and I think they'll have them there.
So is this our last Zoom meeting?
That remains to be seen. That remains to be seen. June 15th, the state of emergency ends, so we have been told that we have to go back to in-person meetings. But because of the, what the governor's proposing is that we continue to be able to do Zoom meetings until September. I, we honestly, I don't know what we're going to do. There's been discussion about doing a hybrid, but that's technology and staff, and we don't know that we have that capacity right now. I'm not sure I can be with you in person and make sure you all have Zoom, you know, laptops and making sure it's showing on a screen and then doing all that. I'm not sure I have that capacity yet, so. But we'll let you know as soon as we can.
Okay.
Right? He'll keep you posted. He'll be the first to know whether you're coming in the building. Does anyone have a preference? I like to be with people.
Me too.
When, when we're dealing with, with, with new applications or the details, it's utterly imperative that we see it all together at the same time in front of us.
Want to scale and so that we can touch it and run on it if we want to. I totally agree with that.
Yeah.
Apparently, your microphone is going alien again on us. I was, I was literally thinking the same thing, Dan.
Apparently, Hamilton's back to in-person, their planning board. That's what Tom Younger said last night.
Is Mike, can you hear me now? Going, you're alien. I love it, you're alien.
You sound like a woodland creature. Or croaking.
Hello, Robin.
Good evening.
I'm going to turn it over to the vice chair to run this, since I sound like Brad Vader.
Uh, no, you're not, because you and I are both being, being kicked out of the meeting.
Are we?
Yes. That's true. We are named. Are you, so, are we going to be removed, Robin?
I mean, if you have recused yourselves, then I think it's best to continue to recuse yourselves. You haven't been named individually. They just named the board members.
The whole board, okay.
Well, except I'm the named plaintiff. I'm the loss.
I understand, but it's in your capacity as a planning board member.
But I didn't vote on it, so.
I, I, I'm not telling you what, that you can or can't do. I'm saying you've recused yourself.
No, I understand. We need to file something to be off.
That's dog sounds better than you do, Anne.
Margaret, I have a question. We, we don't have to come back to the meeting, right? So.
No.
Do we, do we have to vote to adjourn? You're going to have a quorum to vote to adjourn, so.
We will. Yeah, we'll have enough to vote to adjourn.
Have you already convened the executive session? Are you still in open session?
We're still open.
Session.
So I can, I can certainly take note and of that and try to just address it. Later, I don't know what the court will think about it or not. I mean, again, you're named as board members. I think it even acknowledges that. I can, I mean, we can certainly discuss it further. If you want to join in the executive session, I don't want to discuss the case too much in open session, so.
It's, um, just public information. Dawn Pinto is their counsel?
Yes.
Okay. So, all right, I'm, I'm, I'm going to recuse myself and leave the meeting before executive session.
Really noted.
All right, bye, everybody.
And I will.
So is this recorded?
Well, you haven't convened the executive session yet, so you're still in an open session. Once we go in executive session, you can stop recording.
We stop recording? Okay.
Yeah, don't need to record the executive session, but if you normally record the open session, then I would say do what you normally do until we go in the executive session.
I think we were, we were finished with everything that they had to accomplish tonight, Robin.
Okay, then, my, I think Virginia is going to chair for purposes of now and executive session. I can certainly help with the declaration and the motion if you'd like.
Since I have no idea how this is to proceed, I will immediately, I will take the chair and I will immediately turn it over to you.
So as chair, and you can say so declared, once I'm done, but basically you make a declaration that the board is going to go into executive session pursuant to general law, chapter 30A, section 21A3, to discuss, discuss strategy relating to pending litigation known as Hamilton at all, the weeks at all, which is Massachusetts Land Court case number 21 or miss 184 M D V. If the, where you, the chair, have declared that an open meeting have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the board. So you can just acknowledge that, as chair, I've made that declaration.
So declared.
Okay, and then, again, then we just need a motion to go into executive session consistent with the chair's declaration. You can say, someone can just say so moved and just indicate to the public, I take it the board will be adjourning from the executive session, not returning to the public session?
That's right.
Okay, so someone can just, like I said, you can just do a, a so moved to go into executive session with the board adjourning directly from the executive session, not returning to open session.
I move exactly what Robyn Stein just said.
Okay, and then it's just a roll call vote after it's seconded.
Second.
Thank you, David. And so the vote to approve. Roger's aye.
Anderson, aye.
Play aye.
Thank you. And now I will ask Robin to continue and present the, what she has for us.
Robin, I'll stop, I'll stop recording now.
Right now, yeah, now we're in the executive session.